All right, so call this meeting to order at one o'clock. Do I have a second?
Sure.
One o'clock. Thank you. So roll call. I see Ed is here. I see Heidi. Anna, you're here. Chris, I know you're here. Eric, you're here too. Great. Anybody? I know we were talking about John Wagner joining because Nick isn't working on Wednesdays anymore. So, John, are you on the phone? You're here?
John isn't on the line.
No. Okay. All right. Great. So, the agenda, approval of a meeting agenda of a motion to approve that. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
All.
Okay. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, great. Approval of minutes from our special board meeting on the 30th. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
My second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Okay, great. Um announcements, any special announcements? Nope. Okay.
Actually, I have just a thought.
Yeah.
I know these Zoom meetings were kind of especially through the pandemic, but is there a chance that we can actually maybe get back at the end of the year, January, February, back to like face-to-face meetings? It's so much more, I mean, it's so much more personal, you know, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I was gonna make that when we were talking under the reports. I have a couple of announcements though, too, so I can just do it here. Yeah, I reached out to the library and they have the second Wednesdays of every month available to us going forward, starting in January. So at one o'clock, same time, same day. So it'll be a hybrid approach. So for those that don't want to go in person, they can still do the Zoom. And for those that want to meet in person, we can. So there will be most times that I will meet in person, but if I'm out of town, I will join via Zoom as long as we can. So but that is going forward in January. So our first meeting in January will be official, face-to-face, hybrid.
I love it. Thank you.
Yep. So I just have to sign, sign something that says that we won't trash the room.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not a rock and roll band, so I think we're okay.
You know, it can get a little heated here at Parks, I'm saying. Just kidding. So yeah, so there's that. And yep. And then Dawn, I see you're back. Hi, Dawn. The public comments.
Yes, I have my, yeah, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have my audio problem solved. I have nothing, no comments, just listening. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, all right, let's go to old business, the comprehensive plan. So did everybody have a chance to take a look at that? Or at least thumb through it a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's quite, it's quite the publication.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's comprehensive. So what we need to discuss is how we want to do this. So there's a couple of ways that we can do this. One, we could, we could do an ad hoc committee, three members tackle it all themselves. It's a pretty big task. I don't recommend that. I think that the, my personal opinion, well, somebody has another one, is that we each take a section. And some of the sections are pretty big, so we might want to team up, but take a section, read through it, make the changes that need to be made, and come back. I mean, it's not, this goes through to the end of '22, so '23, so we've got the year to do it. And that's why Heidi and I are bringing it up because it is so comprehensive. So we probably need to start tackling it now. So any suggestions on how we want to do that?
I think that's a good start by giving it up chapter-wise.
Yeah, Heidi, you raise first.
Um, okay, so, well, as, as you guys may remember, I kind of went through this chapter by chapter a little bit last time and summarized it. So I've gone back through it again to look at what I think are some of the changes that needs to be done. And, and I would love to hear from others if they've given thought on what to do, but, and I don't know whether we should do that first, but I have some specific thoughts on, on, on how to do it. So do you want me to give those now, Kristen, or? Okay. All right. So, so my thought is that the, well, first of all, just to summarize, 189 pages is how long this thing is, and I think that's way too long. I think that it's a complete wonderful document and, and given that we found out, you know, who, the background of the people involved, it makes, it makes sense. It also is kind of directive in the way it said, and says how things will work, and I'm not sure that that's how things have been working. The example of that is the, the PIPs, which I think stands for Park Improvement Project. So, so here's my specific suggestions by chapter. I think in chapter one, I think we need to find out if the park improvement project has ever even really been used. I think we should review the objectives as a group that are on page 19 and 20. We, once we get approval for the Adopt a Park sign, because I think we have to go through the city with that, I think we should add that as we get that going. So that's really chapter one. Chapter two, I think, is editing for accuracy of the current status. So I think we can divide and conquer this because it lists the separate parks. So I think we can, based on our current park division, and then there are some other areas that we don't, we haven't assigned, that we can assign, and we could divide and conquer that, and then we could take one or two people that kind of put it together for consistency. Chapter three is the one about the North Beach School, and so it's very short, and it's like, and has been asked before, why is it even in here? And chapter four is the state facilities that are nearby, and we could just leave that alone. So chapter five is really the heart of the work. So one person doing chapter five, to me, is not reasonable. Sections five, five, 5.0 to 5.2, I think that they just need to be simplified, and I'd have to go through and even look, these are just my notes. The, this is the, probably the section that has a lot of the, the data about, that would have come from census data and also other aspects that they, that whoever did this originally, people who did this originally, assessed that created demand for parks. So I think that we need to get some updated data there and then perhaps simplify it because it has, it just has information in that, that I don't even know where they maybe got some of that. Then 5.3 is this, is the details. This is where it breaks down all of the areas throughout Ocean Shores that are city-directed areas. So these are some of our existing parks, these are undeveloped parks, these are accesses to the beach areas. I mean, it, there's a lot of them, and some of the things in there have been done. So for example, the blue signs that were put up with the help of the Park Foundation, those have been put up at a lot of the parks, but there's still areas where those have not been put up. There's a long list of priorities here, and I'm not sure that I personally agree with all the priorities. And so I don't know whether we want to reevaluate those. So again, here, what I would suggest is that we break these out into the currently assigned ones, and then we get the rest of the ones assigned. We ask the members to go through and identify what has been done to the particular park, what still maybe needs to be done that is in the list, and we reassess the priorities. And I think part of the way we do that, because we have through next year, is we try to get public feedback through one of the festivals that happens in March. We invite people to come, maybe, maybe we have a special meeting and we invite people to come to it. Maybe we go to some neighbors on some of the undeveloped parks to just, to find out if it's even, if it's even relevant to them. And I'm just going to give you an example for that. So I live on Razor Clam and very close to the part, the public, the natural area that goes around Gooey Duck. And it's undeveloped, and in the, in the park plan, it's to put in a parking area, covered picnic areas, a playground, three types of playgrounds to cover all those age groups that we talked about in our special meeting, the, the youngest group, the middle-aged group, and the seniors. And, and it's, and I, and I just wonder, I mean, it may be that we wanted, that something could be done with that park, but I just wonder, this area is very close to two core parks that the community center has, one of which has a very elaborate place structure. So people who are going to drive can drive there or could drive there. So do we really need a parking lot? Do we really need all the, a covered picnic area? Do we really need all these things? Is this really what should be priorities for Ocean Shores? Or do we need some natural areas still maintained within the city? So those are the things.
Are you, are you asking that during this review, that we're looking at some of the parks that they want to have earmarked for potential development? Do we reconsider some of that as we're going forward? So but we still have to like divide, divide and conquer this plan, right?
Right. So that's my point, is that in section 5.3, which is the real heart of the whole project, is we divide it out. We divide it out by our assigned parks, and then the areas that are undersigned, like Gooey Duck and some of the ocean accesses and stuff, we break those out. So we divide, we divide it, and then people can go and look at those areas. As an individual, I have a list of maybe six. I can go and look at those areas and go, okay, well, this is, this is what's been done, this is what I see needs to still be done, and, and here are some other things on the list. And then we can go back and we can talk about it as a group. Maybe we break it down and we, you know, we, over a course of four or five meetings, we talk about these different areas, and we try to get feedback from the community as well. That's, that, that's what I was trying to say on that section in 5.3, where it really breaks down the list of this is what we need here. Or it has an area and it's got six things.
Hey, Eric? Eric, are you there? Can you?
He's muted.
Hey, I have a question. So when you, when you guys in the city council have been redoing your comprehensive plan, you guys, you guys broke it out into, into teams, right? So like, you know, you and Lisa, maybe one other took a section and.
Yeah, yeah, we, we took a chapter at a time, and it was mainly Lisa and I and Susan.
Okay.
You know, like on the one with the public works, we brought Nick in and just worked through it, and it, it worked really well.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We just, we just, we just read it through to begin with, took our notes, and then came together and hammered it out, and it worked pretty good. The only thing, and, and, you know, I, I agree, it's a good time to update this, but just take into consideration that the city has adopted this comp plan as in the, in our city comp plan as the parks chapter. So whatever you're doing is, is going to go, you know, we'll just, you know, you guys redo it, and then we'll get it back to the overall comp plan.
Right.
I think where you're going, I think what you're doing is a good idea. It just depends on how detailed out you want to get with it.
Well, we, it's already very detailed. We're trying to make it less detailed, actually. So can I interject for a moment?
Yeah.
Some of my concern in this, and I, I completely agree that it is very, very detailed, and that is a lot of it, but my answer concern to this is that the majority of us on here are newbies to the park department, and the people who wrote this and invested a lot of their time and energy had years of really digging deep into a lot of different areas. And my concern is if we go in there and hack this thing up so that it appeases us to have a smaller reading scale, we might find ourselves down the road, understanding more why they had so many different things in there. And then we are finding ourselves kind of repeating it and having to redo the work that was already done once. If I'm, if I'm misunderstanding the intent, then I apologize, but I'm just kind of concerned. I've, I've done that before, but I've gone into something, cut out a bunch of stuff, and then later said, oh, wow, now I know why it was there because of this, and it just kind of snowballs. So I would say maybe we should use some caution in just going in there and removing a bunch of things right off the bat.
Maybe you could, you could reach out to Michael Darling, because he was, he was the guy who, who kind of drove this whole thing. So it just, you could get some different back, background information from him.
Right. I know Susan, Susan Connery also worked on it, you know, I.
I, we met with Michael Darling, and it was just Michael Darling and Rich Otto that did this. I, I.
She told, she told me she worked on it. So how odd.
Well.
I'll have to look into that then.
So. Well, go ahead, Ed. Sorry, I, go ahead.
So I looked at, I looked through this also, and I also saw that, I mean, I didn't read every page, but I noticed that most of the things that were on this comprehensive plan really hadn't been addressed. And it seems to me, the more complicated a plan is, the harder it is to actually get it done. I personally, I think a simpler plan, one that's more directed at the projects that we've been talking about, and, and putting some of the other things more on the back burner, we might have a better shot to actually accomplish some of these things than, than have this, have this 200-page document that really hardly anybody, besides maybe us, is going to actually read through it.
Well, I think, Anna, you're, you're right to the fact that they, they put a lot of work into this, and I'm not saying that we have to take it all out, but another part of it is too, like, they want some of these things accomplished by a certain timeline. And like, and parks that are undeveloped, they want to develop, and we can't even take care of the parks that we have developed. So we can absolutely keep those parks there, but not put a timeline on it. Just say, yeah, this is a park. We've, we've earmarked this as a park. We know that it's going to be undeveloped.
Burner and work.
Yeah, we're not going to take that away. It's just that we.
To us now.
Right. We need to, we need to take a look at those things. That's what I'm wanting to do.
I agree.
Does that make sense, Anna?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Actually, I was just, I just touched base real quick with Susan because I, I don't like to be misinformed, nor do I like to pass on misinformation. And I just asked her, I said, hey, just a quick question. Did you, did you, regarding the Parks Department comprehensive plan, did you work on it? And she said she helped edit it. I said, so you did not help create it after all? And I'm waiting to respond. I just wanted to verify that before I spoke out of turn with anybody. So yeah, I definitely think the extra weight on it should be removed, but I don't want to see us just start hacking away a bunch of things.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting hacking anything. I'm just, it's, it's just whether it's really relevant to the, to the timeframe that we're looking at. So if we're going to start a new five-year one, it's 23 through 28, right? Or through 27, I don't know. It's like, sometimes it's. But the, this plan was 18 through 22, is that right? Or through, or 7, well, whatever. And, and there's just a big list of stuff that isn't going to happen. And it, I mean, it's, it's not happening. And so I, and I just think that we could relook at what the realistic priorities are for the timeframe of the five-year plan. And if we want to put in there that longer term, there's, you know, there, I mean, notes of maybe for the next five years, but longer term, I think that's fine. But, you know, I'm, I'm just suggesting that 189 pages is too long. It's complicated. The details in it, the whole section, chapter six is directive and goes into details that nothing was done with for, like, you know, for the budgeting. And to be honest, I don't even understand part of what they're doing.
Just, just my recommendation to simplify it, and you want to be careful, you know, and cognizant to the people who put it together, but a comprehensive plan is like a 30,000-foot overview and isn't, for this very reason, in a five-year, you know, I would just put your priorities on, you know, we want to do X, Y, and Z with these parks without detailing it out too much, because, you know, as, as we know, things change. But I would definitely make it much more of an overview document that can be, you know, can be changed. You just have your goals and your priorities, but when it gets this detailed, it doesn't get followed because it's too hard anyway. So just a recommendation. That's usually, that's what our comp plan is, is just an overview with goals and what we'd like to accomplish, but not so detailed that, how do you even do it?
Thank you, Eric. That's, yeah.
Oh, Chris?
Can I just, yeah, having been the, the person that has been sitting in on the park board meetings going back to 18, I can honestly tell you that I didn't even, I, I wasn't even aware that there was a comp plan out there. It never got brought up. It never got discussed. It was just the status quo. I mean, we just, it was one hour to the exact minute, and it, it was never, they just didn't want to, I mean, they weren't following the comp plan. That's all I can say.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think we can feel comfortable about moving it forward at our discretion.
All right. So, so let's, right. So let's try to figure out how we want to divide this up. So I, I know that you said, Ed, did you have a suggestion, or was it more like Heidi's?
Suggestion is simply, let's, you don't have to throw the whole plan out, but let's have the first section be the priorities that we, that we can reasonably accomplish, that, that are in our power to possibly have, make happen so that we can concentrate on those things first and get, you know, my goal is to, coming on this park's board is to get something done, okay? To, to show the city of Ocean Shores that we're capable of actually getting something done, okay? And great five years down the road, 10 years down the road on parks that, that nobody really uses or aren't really part of the thing. Let's, I'd like to concentrate on what we can really actually accomplish. So that, that's just my suggestion. That's my goal.
Okay, right. And I think that that's the goal of all of ours. So.
Yeah, I believe so, too.
So I think what we need to do, I, I'd rather break each chapter up, like, in, you know, two people or, or three people at a time. How do we do that and tackle it together? No, Heidi?
No, because, I mean, like, chapter three and four basically have very little to them. And it's, I mean, chapter five is the heart of it. And I mean, there is absolutely no way that, I mean, you're not going to get me to help with any of them, because if, if, if we do it that way, that's all I'm going to say, because it's just, it, I mean, chapter five is just unattainable to, I mean, how do we reassess?
I guess I'm confused then. How do you want to do it? Because you don't want to take like three people and tackle chapter five? And divide that.
We had a big enough group, but I don't think it can be, I don't, I mean, it has to be, if you have a big enough group and the people, and that they're going to divvy it up and really work on it in, in parts, but if it falls to one person.
No, I'm saying each chapter, each chapter will have two to three people on it.
Okay.
If it's a small chapter, you know, that's fine, but like the bit, like chapter five, pick three people. You each, all of you tackle the chapter five parts of it. That's what I'm.
I think chapter one, because chapter one, I think it can be, it can be done by maybe one or two people, but I think that the whole, the whole board needs to assess those objectives in chapter one. That's, that, that would be my take. I don't think you can put that into people. Yeah.
So just because the city council just went through this, and Eric, feel free to chime in and correct. So what they would do, and this is, is just a suggestion of, maybe you want to go through it that way, is what they would do is they'd put one, two, three sections on the agenda for the group at the, at the meeting that they're going to be in, to do an overview and kind of spout out their, their reasons for not liking this or their reasons for not changing that. And then Mayor Pro Tem would then appoint an ad hoc committee of three and say, you take chapter one. When it's done, complete with revisions, red line revisions that you'd like, that will come to the next meeting, and then the board would approve or disapprove because they want more changes, that one, then that one's done and put to the side. Then you move on to the next one. So that's how the city council, which is two members shy of the parks board, went through the entire comprehensive plan for the city. So they did break it up into sections. They did review it as a group, then they distinguished their ad hoc committees to do those red line revisions. Then that ad hoc, ad hoc committee brought it back, and the board or council approves it, and then you move on to the next one. So that's just a suggestion on breaking it up. Everybody gets their input. An ad hoc committee then does the redlining of what they would like the document based on the group's interest to look like, subject to, and then bring it back, and the group approves it. And it just kind of makes it very simple. There's group involvement. There's the little ad hoc committee that does the red lines and dives into the, like Ed's talking about, I want to get these things done. This is what we need, and there is the bulk. They bring that document back, and then the group decides as a whole whether they approve or decline that version of the chapter. That's just a suggestion.
Okay, so you're, okay.
Can we do this over a year? How much time do we have to do this?
Yeah, we can. I mean, some of the chapters are pretty small. There's just a couple of them that are pretty detailed. I mean, I think so.
Okay, I mean, if we, if we don't try and, and just go through this all at one time, and we take it in small bits and pieces, and we take our time over the next eight, nine months, that might be workable.
Right. So like, you know, like, chapter one, we could just have that for January, our suggestions in January, right? Is that what? Heidi, is that what you're thinking? As a group, we bring our, we all read it, we bring our suggestions in January, we go over at the next meeting.
I. Yeah, I think that that approach would work. I just think that we get to chapter five, it's going to be a challenge, but I think that approach, starting with chapter one, it's, you know, because as a group, we need to assess what we think the objectives are for the next five years, and that's where the, that's the chapter that has that. Chapter two is going to require somebody going and finding some data. And so we're going to have to, you know, get one or two people that are really willing to dig in and, you know, update some data. Three and four are basically fine as is. Five is what's going to be the big challenge, and it's going to take, that's, that's, to me, that's going to take breaking out, but.
And there's only seven, there's only seven chapters. I mean, chapter five is going to take a few meetings, obviously.
And chapter seven is basically just somebody rewriting what the process was.
Right.
And chapter six, again, is directive, and I don't, I think that that chapter could be totally redone in the way of like, okay, well, how, how are we going to try to get these funded and in the budget? Because the way, yeah, so, and Chris, thank you for what you said, because, because it kind of shows that this was done, but then even the board didn't really go back to this. And so what, what I feel like is that this can be a document to help the board go through for the next five years and do, and, and do their budget planning to present to the, to, to the city every biennium. So that's, that's what this would be good. But Eric's right, it's a 30,000-foot level. It doesn't have to necessarily get down to the level of detail that is in here. I think we can easily get it down to 100 pages or less, because a lot of it is appendix. Because a lot of it is appendix where they're listing all the stuff for future park ideas, like a spray park and a. A memorial park, and those are great, those are great things, but we don't. Great ideas, but we don't necessarily need to have all of that detail in the complaint.
Thank you.
Yeah, so. Alright, so, just. Sarah, so we just picked chapter one, we all fix it, work on it and bring back our ideas at the next meeting. Is that what you were saying, how the city council does it, and then we then form an ad hoc committee at that point? To formally make those changes, is that what?
Correct, and then in February, then you would bring chapter two to review as a group and you would put on there's old business. Chapter one, and either you're going to approve the red line or, or you bring them back. And they had several ones where they were doing, where the ad hoc committees had both met up. And Eric can attest, like, uh, I think it was coincidentally, chapter four and five of the overall comprehensive plan. I mean, there was an ad hoc committee is done with three chapters and we were still working on five because it was huge and full of numbers and such. So, yeah, that's what I would do, I would just, you know, at this meeting, direct everyone to start reviewing chapter one, see if there's any revisions, bring them back. And then at that time, you can either approve it because you all like it, or you can assign an ad hoc committee to bring it back to the next meeting in February.
Alright, Heidi, are you, are you okay with that approach?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we review chapter one for the next meeting in January, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Nope, okay. Everybody get ready for chapter one in January at our first live in-person meeting. Um. Okay, great. Anything else on, on the plan, Heidi, that you want to talk about? The parks?
No, I think I pretty much hit the highlights, and so, um, one thing I would, um, encourage people to do, not by. Not by January, but start, I mean, look at, look at your, look at your parks that you have assigned. And, and see what's in there so you can get an idea of the, of the type of. Detail that they had and, um, and then, and maybe a few others that are outside. Because that's, that's gonna be the hard thing to tackle, is are we going to reset these priorities or are we gonna keep those priorities? That's, that's just something that we're gonna be facing come about what, May? So, April or May, so.
Yeah, okay, alright, it's a good idea. Alright, so moving on, we don't have any new business discussion reports, um. I reached out to the teacher at North Beach High School who does the. Well, they don't call it wood shop anymore, I can't remember the actual name they call it. And he is very interested in seeing what the past students did over at Chinook Park at that ADA ramp. Um, and seeing how they can help us build that cover. So I'll be meeting with him, we're trying to meet next week, um, but if he can meet next week, if not, then it'll have to be after. After the break, um, he's going away for a couple of weeks. So, that was kind of exciting, that he was excited to, to be involved and see what the students can do, so. Um, also, I, uh, was forwarded an email, um, in regards to the skate park. So there is a concerned citizen, um, about, about that, and, and I did let them know that, yes, we're aware. And that is part of, um, one of our suggestions to the city council is to, is to fix that. Um, so, uh, Ed, I thought I'd tell you, I know that you're skate park, but I thought I'd tell you that that was. Um, sent to me, it was actually sent to, to Mayor Martin, but for, to me, so.
Okay, well, no, that's great.
Yeah, no.
At least we're aware, right?
We're, exactly, we're aware, and that's, that's really good. Um, so, that's the only reports I have, anybody else have any reports? Anna, anything to report?
Um, no, um, nothing more than what we saw, you know, from the last time, I mean, the potholes are getting to be a little bit more, but it's also because we've had these lovely rains. Um, and the weather, but we kind of knew that was coming into it, so everything else looks about the same.
Okay, Chris, anything, anything not like specifically park, anything to report, just in general?
Uh, no, not this one.
Heidi, you're up, next.
Um, so, yeah, um, and, and this maybe was a, an agenda item, but there's. I, I looked on the schedule for, um, I briefly mentioned this a little bit ago, but I looked on the schedule for the convention center. And there's two March fairs, there's the Beach Comers Fun Fair, March fourth to the sixth. And there's the Razor Clam Festival, March eighteenth to the twentieth. So I don't know if we want to consider one or both of those to have a table at, and maybe we do both of them, or we just do the table on Saturday or something like that. And, um, and so I was going to try to reach out if people were okay to. The, um, convention center, I think it's Diane who, um, who runs it and see if it would be possible for us to get a table and not have to pay for it.
Okay.
So for city, since we're a city group, to, to get, to get input and then we can, you know, advertise it. That will be there and, you know, and have information about the parks and collect, you know, hear what people have to say.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, okay, that'd be great if you could do that, let us know. Ed, anything to report, not park specific?
Okay, well, I, I didn't get a chance to, unfortunately, to read the agenda for today, so. But I did have a meeting with Michael Darling, is, is that on the agenda, is that something we're gonna talk about separate or?
You met with Michael Darling?
Yes.
Um, it's not on the agenda, but that's fine, you can.
Okay.
Report that.
For the Parks Foundation.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, and what Michael would like to really, really do is, is, is walk away from the Parks. Uh, foundation, okay, so we had a great conversation about that. I am considering, uh, taking that over, okay? But what needs to be done with that, the Parks Foundation is a private foundation, it's a private five oh one C three. And basically, in another year, it won't be there if, if we don't change the status because of the taxes that he pays. There's about three thousand, there's less than three thousand dollars in the, in the account right now. And he's paying about eight hundred dollars a year between taxes and, and, and fees for, for, um. You know, for an accountant, so. I've talked to the accountant, I've talked to, uh, both Michael and, and, and also, uh, Christine Peterson.
Kathy.
Kathy, I'm sorry, Kathy Peterson, and, um. We're going to meet with the accountant in January and see if we can change that status to a. To a, a regular nonprofit, to a, so that we can actually. First of all, it will save a lot of money because we don't pay, you don't pay taxes on a, on a, on a nonprofit that is a public nonprofit, okay? It's a ten dollar a year filing fee and that's it. And second of all, we can then, uh, approach people like Ace Hardware, IGA. Martin Bruni Liquor, to see if they would be willing to do the roundoff thing that, that, uh, that they do to, to, to raise some. Some public money.
Okay.
And put, and.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
And put, and put some funds back into the foundation, so. Again, Michael really, really wants to walk away from this, he doesn't want to do this anymore. Uh, I believe that Kathy Peterson is willing to stick, to stick with it.
Okay.
So, and, uh, between her and I, I, I think. It's worth saving because we can raise money.
Yeah.
That doesn't go into the city coffers, right?
Yeah.
It stays separate, so we're working on that, again, we have, we have a meeting planned for, um, for, for January, we don't have a date yet. But Michael's excited, I'm excited, the accountant seems to think it's not a huge deal to do this, okay? So that's where we're moving forward with the Parks Foundation and. And again, I think it, it is, will be a great tool to raise some extra funds, it may not give us the funds to. To buy twenty-five thousand dollars worth of playground equipment, but it might pay for benches, it might pay for signs. It might pay for, you know, gravel, it might pay for pothole repairs, right, things like that.
Um, well, I.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Yeah, thanks, and when Heidi and I met with Michael about the foundation, you know, he was gonna close it and we, we definitely felt like there was a need to keep it going. So, thanks for thinking about stepping in, and, um, yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Ed, another great person to talk to would be, uh, Denise Sires or Keith Owen, Keith is the library director.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Denise Sires, the, did for the longest time, the Library Board Foundation. It was a five oh one C three, and they are very, very well educated in all of the things that it can do and. And how it can contribute to exactly what you're talking about with the parks.
So I have my own five oh one C three, so I'm, uh, since two thousand and eleven for a project in Cambodia, so. Um, I, I know a little bit about it, so I, I think I can help, but, but thank you for the information, and Keith is a great asset.
Yeah, perfect, well, thanks, okay, awesome, that's great, Ed. Um, yeah, I, I don't want to close down either, I think it's, I think it's very, um, important to keep that open, so. Alright, um, Eric, do you have anything for us, council liaison?
No, I don't, I, uh, I just appreciate the conversation you guys are having and, uh, the, the activity. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about what you guys are gonna do with the park, so, good job.
Thanks, alright, park inspection, um. Nothing to report on Chinook and Spinnaker, seem to be the same. So, um, Chris, you've got North Bay Park, Limpet and North and Grand Canal.
Yeah, the, um, Limpet's kind of interesting because there's a house going up on the north. Um, side of Limpet, and then there's another house going up east of Limpet, and so that's gonna change the. Dynamics of that area, but, um, anyway, and then the potholes. At in the North Bay Boat Launch, uh, parking lot are more like pot lakes.
Okay.
I mean, with the rain especially, but, um, we probably should maybe do a Band-Aid approach to that. To make, just to let the public know that we're putting some effort forward on that, it would make it, it would look nicer. But just throwing gravel in the holes just seems to be the, they, the gravel kind of just gets thrown out of the hole. I noticed there was a lot of gravel on the edge of the potholes. In the, in the potholes, so it's like, I'd have to rethink that.
Okay.
And then other than that, the, uh, Grand Canal, North Grand Canal is pretty quiet, but it's, it's, it's good, there's no garbage anywhere, so.
So on our special meeting that we had, you know, on November thirtieth, we let Nick Bird know. That there was potholes there that needed to be addressed, so. Um, maybe we can reach out to him again to make sure that he's following up, the, the crew's following up with that.
Just, just a, just an FYI, especially on like North Bay Park. Um, and I can't speak for her because I'm sure she's very, very busy, but. Um, reaching out to Sarah Bisson and looking at grants, because I know Aberdeen and Hoquim have got a lot of grants for city parks that they've done. And I don't know how much our park board, you know, previously have actually looked into any type of grants. Um, for paving North Bay specifically, they might be out there.
Okay, no, we haven't looked at grants for paving for North Bay. Um. Okay, so, great, uh, Anna.
You kind of got mine a little bit earlier, a little premature, but same thing, just got a few, uh, real nice looking potholes at Marine View. Um, they're, uh, they're getting really big and they're right next to the road. A little bit of concern there that somebody coming around that corner could end up in that, one of those nice potholes there. Um, besides that, everything else looks about the same.
Perfect, Heidi?
Um, well, first of all, I want to give a shout out to, um, John Wagner and the crew that took care of the tree at Emerson. So I went by again after they did it, and it, they, I mean, they just did an awesome job cleaning it up, it was a big tree that fell. And they had to clean up the part that fell, but they also took care of cutting the one down to the very base. Um, that, that, that was the one that broke off, so I just want to recognize that. And the only other thing I have is at Gunderson, and I don't know what we do about this, because Gunderson is an adopted park. But at the south end, there's a bench that's broken off. And looks like it's been, it was like it was blown over, so it had to happen in one of these big, heavy windstorms in the last, uh. My month or so, and, um, yeah, so I don't know whether it's the city crew that would come and collect it. Or whether it would be somebody in the dock to park thing, but it is not safe.
Okay.
I don't know who we tell.
Um, well, maybe we just let Nick, I don't, Eric, do you know?
Um, being that that's a adopted park, because I know that people around there take care of it, I don't know who the contact person is, but.
Yeah.
Probably just trying to find out who that contact person is and, um, if they need help or if they're gonna take care of it, but. That, that's one hundred percent an adopted park by the people around Gunderson.
Right, so, so would Nick Bird know who the contact is or John Wagner?
Yeah, I would think so, because it had to go through somebody to do that.
Okay, alright, so Heidi, maybe reach out to. To John or Nick and let him know that.
Okay.
They need to let, yeah, somebody know there, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Um. Alright, perfect, thanks Heidi, um, Ed, you have the skate park and the Lions Club Park.
Right, well, we've discussed the skate park, so that's. That's on the agenda, so it's definitely something that we really, really need to look into if we want to keep it open. As far as the Lions Park is, you know, there isn't a whole lot there, but it is being taken over by weeds. Uh, the great, the grass is growing through the gravel, it needs gravel desperately. Uh, all of the places where the swings are, where the kids play, big holes. So, but that's neat, you know, I mean, really, that should be an easy fix, I've had, I've had, you know. Five yards of gravel delivered to my house for under two hundred dollars, you know, so, I mean, we should be able to fix that relatively easy. That's all that should take, but it does require, uh, the weeds are definitely taking over, so I don't, I don't know how exactly we address that. But otherwise, you know, it's there.
So it needs some gravel though, too, right?
It, it absolutely.
We have to let Public Works know.
It's just for the safety end, but, but it isn't a huge job, I mean, it's not like. We're, we're, the parking lot is fine, I'm, I'm talking directly of the, of that. You know, twenty by twenty square foot area where the playground is, you know, so.
Okay.
Have a question, Kristen. Uh, for, for purposes of the notes, um, we've got. Uh, the potholes at North Bay, which you pointed out that we had told Nick about, but then there's these new potholes. At Marine View Park, well, they're not new, but they need to be addressed, and now the gravel at the playground, so do you want? Who do you want to contact Nick about these, or do you want me to do it in the con text of that I'm also talking to him about Gunderson? Or do you want to do that, or?
Um, well, that's, uh, normally they're on the call, so they, he just knows about it, so, um. I'll go ahead and just send him a quick email, just to, because they weren't on the call, and I'll, I'll email both Nick and John Wagner.
Okay.
So, um.
I have a comment.
Yeah, Chris?
Oh, this, this getting back to the gravel at, um, the Lions Club, I, the other park, the other play areas have bark. It's the ground cover, and I know that's a more accepted coverage for play area. To the point where I don't even know if gravel's, um, a, a legal, um, playground cover anymore. So before we order gravel, we better check and see if it should be replaced by bark.
Well, Chinook has gravel. I don't think any of our, does Gunderson, I don't know if any of our.
Nor, North Bay has bark.
Bark.
And that's a pretty big area, and I, yeah, I think it's something goes back to a certain, you know, year when they changed the. The ground cover for play areas.
Okay.
And the Lions Club and Chinook look about the same age of equipment.
Oh, I, yeah.
Might have been okay.
It's antiquated, yeah, we know that, okay, alright.
Yeah, just a, just a thought.
Okay, Heidi, and when I email, um, Nick, do you want me just to include the Gunderson Park?
He wants, if he wants somebody to reach out. To their contact, you can, you can give me that information and I can reach out, so that then I'll have that contact.
Okay, got it. Um, okay, so moving on, number six, future meeting items, obviously, we're gonna, everybody needs to review chapter one of the comprehensive. Plan and bring your revisions. Um, next meet, oh, go ahead, Heidi.
The, um, the other thing that we need to, we should address at the next meeting on January twelfth is. We're probably on that second council meeting in January, going to want to do our presentation to. City Council either that meeting or the first in February, maybe Sarah has input on that. Of our, of our priority list, so I think we need to, um, discuss. Who's going to do that and what we're going and how we're gonna do that, are we gonna do like a. I think you have a slideshow as well, you know, some images of the parks that we're talking about as well or.
PowerPoint?
So I think we need to talk about that at that next meeting.
So, I don't have my January, hold on a second, here it is, when's, uh, their second and fourth. Um. Second and fourth Mondays, right, Sarah, for. So the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, is that what you have, Sarah, for when the city council meets or Eric? I'm off a day, tenth and twenty-fourth. So, Sarah and Eric, do you think that January twenty-fourth is an okay date to talk about our priorities for those ARPA funds? Or do you think that's still too soon?
No, uh, sooner is probably better just to get it in front of the council of what, what you're looking at, what you're thinking, because we're gonna be talking about it also, so. I would do it sooner than later.
Okay, so the twenty-fourth is, is an okay date?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, because Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that's when you guys were really gonna start deep diving into the, um, ARPA funds. So that they were intertwined in the new biennial budget.
Right, um, uh, my, I think we're probably, I know John wants to have a council retreat in January. Probably in the middle where we're just talking about, you know, city at, at a, at a high range, just ideas and city things, but the twenty-fourth would be a good one. As we're gonna have to start detailing out, you know, ARPA funds and what we want to do with them and stuff, so that one would be a good one, yeah. I don't think you need to do it earlier than that, but twenty-fourth would be good.
Okay, alright, so on the next future meeting then, um. Which is on the twelfth, we need to discuss who's gonna present and how we're gonna present it, is that what you're saying, Heidi?
Yes.
Okay, I would agree with that. Um. Alright, so January twelfth, so that's gonna be our first hybrid, so, um, anybody who wants to meet in person at the library. At one o'clock, um, please do, if you're more comfortable, um, behind the camera and a computer, that's totally fine. Um. Other than that, I think I have a motion to adjourn at one fifty-three, do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, you guys.
Alright, and, and we'll get together next week, right?
Yeah, the add.